This time we'll call the Tuesday, August second, twenty twenty two, meeting of the Jackson County Board Supervisors to Order. Larry McDebat, Mike Steinis and myself, Jack Willie are the county supervisors. Jesus Smith, County Auditor, Leland Roki is our administrative assistant. And first item on our agenda this morning is Captain Jackson County interim engineer. Good morning, Todd.
Good morning, good morning. So the resolution before you is to participate in the safe streets and roads for all grants. It's part of the IAA, the new transportation bill. So what this is, it's a billion dollars, but in order to access the funds for project work, you have to have an approved safety plan in place first. So they want you to go through the effort of having a plan to address how you're gonna effectively, I guess, use the money for safety improvements in the county. So this, this resolution is to put Jackson County in with the group of other counties that are going for the grant to hire a consultant to draft these plans that would make Jackson County eligible to apply for funding through the SS four A, the safe, whatever, the safe streets and roads for all grant program. So that's what this is. For reference, like Clinton County had a local road safety plan back in two thousand sixteen that was paid for out of the A CIP program, which is the highway safety program, but different. It's a federal program. We didn't have to pay for it, but that, those plans actually don't qualify. They don't quite meet the requirements. So Clinton County is also being part of this. So we can get an updated plan so we can be able to.
So there's no better way or option to have a better chance if you like, sometimes you combine projects to get a bigger.
Well, this is, if you don't have this plan, you're not eligible to apply.
Just per county each time.
Yeah. So this is, we're going together. I think it's, how do I say this? I think applications are what are more favorably when there's ninety some counties or whatever going together. Yeah. I would imagine if there's not gonna be a hundred percent participation, it'd be very close with the counties of the state.
I'd like a motion to go ahead with the SS four A grant application for participation.
Can I just for a minute? This is a resolution. So this is resolution nine seventeen dash zero eight dash zero two dash twenty twenty two.
Include that number on the motion.
I'll second that. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
So give you a quick update on some other things.
Yeah.
You sure can.
So Midwest contractors, they're gonna be doing the PCC patching. They're scheduled for the week of August fifteenth. So that's on D sixty one, D seventeen. They don't have a working days associated with that, but there's an October first completion date. So August fifteenth tentative start date. They have till August first. October.
Okay.
But they're not starting till fifteen.
October, October first, start August fifteenth, complete by October. And then we had a request about hybrid road issue with a farmer that has ground on both sides, which is posted. So we're working with Origin basically to do like an oversized overweight permit that he's, like, if there's an oversized overweight load on a bridge that was legal, a lot of times you can get them across. If they settle on the load, they reduce speed, they'll gear shifting, blah, blah, blah. So if that's the case, then he can cross that bridge with a permit and we would just issue that permit for like, say, harvest season or something. But he would be, it would, it would allow him to cross it legally without going around, which he has their access, but obviously it's so farther, it's out of, out of around town. So still waiting your back for origin of that.
Is this semi or? Is this, is this semi?
Yes, it's a, it's a long bridge. So it would all be over. Um, three hundred and eighty ninth Avenue. The issue with the, there's a road culvert drains under the road. There's like a stand pipe that he's put in. And then he's collecting water from a twenty-four inch pipe and then running it in a field tile that I think is twelve inches in diameter. I think maybe Larry brought that up. So I, I met up with Roger, trying to get a hold of this person, but the, there's, called him several times, but there's no voicemail account set up. But I think, cause I wanted to get specific, what is defined specifically what his issues are. So we can, if we can address them, address them. But I think I have a, an idea of what, what his issue is based on what I, what I saw out there. But I think in the interim, until we get a hold of the guy, we will probably put ditch checks up on the west side of the road to slow the water down and collect some of the sediment that's in the water. Cause it's, I mean, it's steep. It comes down the hill, turns basically about ninety degrees and goes under the roads with the road culvert that drops quite a bit down into his, looks like there was a waterway in his property, kind of fill it in. It looks, I mean, you could roll across it now, I think it's got cattle in it. But so we'll probably do that right away. And I won't do anything else on the force of what is, that's adjacent to his, his property until we get. The last thing on the, so in, but looking at destination lighting, we talked about this, I think, various meetings. So I, I looked at the, your existing lighting map that Stacy gave me and went over it with Mike and we identified, I think, thirteen other intersections that are paved road intersections that are not in an incorporated area that potentially could be put up destination lights. So I'm having Mike prepare a table of all the intersecting streets and their annual daily traffic counts at those each leg. So what I'm gonna do is look at that, come up with an average per leg and compare that with where you already have lighting. Okay. So we can establish like a standard or a metric. So we can develop a policy and say, hey, if you have four hundred vehicles per leg of an intersection, that's the threshold. When you meet that threshold, we'll put up a light. We're getting updated costs to do an install from a, just getting an estimate from a contractor. And then Stacy split together what our energy costs are per light. So I'll have the install cost, annual maintenance costs or energy costs. And then we can kind of, we'll have an idea of if you wanna, if you wanna set, wherever you set that threshold, we'll have a policy. Anything above that, we'll put a light up. Anything below, we won't. But we'll know what's gonna cost us to do, say, five, ten, whatever lights we wanna do.
So is there a set luminance for each light?
Yeah. So what, what I propose we do is we look at the standard lights we've done in the past and do a, a ba- basically a generic detail. So every intersection we do is gonna be the same. And we won't have a bunch of unicorns out there. They will be a, a consistent application of a light.
I know the new lights here in town are nothing compared to what the old ones were. I mean, they light up the spot and blow the light, the rest of the start.
Yeah. So the, the problem with, I should say the problem, the LEDs are super bright, but your light, they're the, the, their area of influence is reduced. So we'll look at probably options, but it'll be, you know, it'll be a standard post, very weight post. It'll have a standard mast arm and luminary. But I, I think what we do should be consistent. We shouldn't have one type of light here and another one there. It should be a, a standard detail by my mind. And that's our application. So when the intersection, you get more traffic or something and an intersection hits that threshold and we put up a light, it's gonna be the same light you see wherever you're driving.
Do you go back like accident history, five, ten, twelve, whatever?
So that'll be a part of the policy. If you wanna look at, if there's a five-year accident history, but the thing is you gotta look at the cause of crash. So if these crashes are happening in daylight, you can throw them out because the lights aren't gonna help that, right? So you could put that component in the policy, but I'll draft a written policy to address this. And then the board will approve that policy. And then anything that, that meets those warrants, we put up a light. It's like a traffic signal. If you meet the warrants, you put up a.
Speed limit in these areas too. Normally, you live in at thirty-five won't justify.
That was on the rubble stops. So the rubble stops are, so here's if you want specifically, so like, if a driver is asleep, it doesn't matter if you have a light, right? So the rubble stops provide the driver feedback. So if you have some accidents that are happening at night and it's because the driver fell asleep, then you're gonna wanna put in rubble stops because that's the driver feedback to wait someone, yeah, a light's not gonna wake you. But yeah, so you typically light intersections because they're out in the middle of nowhere where there's no ambient light by residences or, or city or whatever. And it just, especially if it's a, it's a stop control or if there's a yield thing, people need to see that in advance. So they can start slowing down. I know it's, we have a lot of destination lights, but they're just, people like them, especially older people, because you need the extra light to see where, where you. But the rubble stops, that's a different thing. For that intersection we're talking about, typically you wouldn't put them in for that moment. Speed limit, but if it's an issue where people are falling, you know, if that's the issue, rubble stops are very inexpensive. Put them in. Yeah. I'm, I'm guessing you could get them put in for less than, I mean, I figured the mobilization, but like the unit costs, if they're part of a contract, they're no more than a few hundred dollars. But you don't have the boat cost because that boat cost is in a different lineup. So it's, I'm gonna guess, I bet you could do it for less than three thousand dollars per installation. And if you proved to fuel them together, you'd probably get better price.
Is there something we could buy and do them ourselves? Like a stump grinder version of where it's more high tech than that?
Well, I would say it's high tech, but you have to meet the standard. So like, you would wanna be able to do this, do it accurately enough to meet the DOT standards. There's a standard on how you cut these, the, the, the spacing to death, all that stuff. So I, I would say we wouldn't wanna try to do it ourselves. Most of the time, you know, if you're gonna do them, you just do them associated with the project. So like, if you're gonna do an overlay or something, you just make it.
Did I understand or hear that's half of the south may, gonna be new, gonna be open today?
Looks, looks closed. Yeah. But they were gonna switch traffic over at any time. That's what I, I talked to Daniel last week.
Interesting. Are they mudjacking also right now on coming to our roads?
Yes. And I drove, driven on several of them. And I don't know what they felt like ahead of time, but they're pretty smooth now. They're gonna be finishing up, I think, today or tomorrow.
Cause I was just close to where I reside and well, somebody's still in sight of one lane road ahead.
Yeah. So.
So I drove up the road and there's, a couple hours later and there's a bunch of holes in the road. I'm looking down in holes. Well, this must be mudjacking, but that is reasonably done as far as financially or cost wise. Rather than tearing out, I suppose.
I would say it's, if the pavement that you're gonna mudjack is in good shape and it's just settled and faulted, that's the way to do it. If the pavement that you're gonna do that to is cracked or faulted, or you know, there's, there's distress, then I would do it. But I think the spots that, that what has been chosen are typically approaches to a bridge where you do get settlement and you get erosion. That, those are, those are the prime spots to do that.
Well, this spot happens to be a real good spot. I mean, there's no cracking or, but, but it is one of these all of a sudden, there was a dip form, whether it be from a large fire tank or whatever, but it's one of them that when somebody, as I said, the black marks are catchy from the bump. They come back down.
So most of the time you'll see it like, it'll be over a culvert or a rear approach. I think the budget line item, I believe, was seventy thousand dollars. And I think what we had sent them of a list of spots to do is gonna be well over that. So we just said here, do the priority spots. When you get to seventy thousand, we're gonna cut it off. So I, I think it's a good maintenance practice. I mean.
It'll be interesting for the shit.
Yeah. So like, we actually, when we were out last week, I think you, if you look down the right road, you could see them. They were working in an area we drove by. So.
So I mean, we had Marty contact them because they were in the area, but depends what that property is. That might be a different scenario than on the road.
Well, I don't know. Again, I don't know. It depends. Like if you have a, it depends on the size of the slab that you're jacking, right? So if you're jacking up a big slab, well, you'd have to cut that slab out, redo it. It's just the, the size of the pass determines where the cost break is, you know what I mean?
And guaranteed that this mudjacking probably not.
Oh, well, here's the deal. You know, if you're drilling holes in the concrete and I think one, they said they pumped in like nine yards. Well, that's a big void under the slab.
Well, you look at the claims today and there's quite a difference in mudjacking per yard and in the regular concrete. I'm going, I started doing the division. I said, Jane, get your car where you're out here. But yeah.
So like, we pay like a hundred and forty bucks a yard for a class C mix. Well, that's just material. That doesn't count going out and saw cutting it, taking it out, over excavation, placing rocks. So if you look at the mud jack cost, that's everything. You look at the price of concrete, that's not even half the cost of patch. Cause you gotta finish it. You gotta set up traffic control. You gotta put bar in around the perimeter. I mean, you're, you're just scratching the surface with the material cost.
Oh, I mean, and I heard the story over here on West, um, just a couple years ago here, where they dug it. It was a three foot void under it.
There was one next to my shop down there. And the neighbor, neighbor across the street, their steward, where it hooked in the main, must've fallen out at some point in time. And it just kept taking out. That was hole was fourteen foot deep. And the black guy just kinda came down and they were kind of blaming it on the trucks and whatever. That one overlooked. I'm like, oh, God. And what, and the homeowner said, well, they're gonna make me pay for some of that or whatever. And like, well, and I explained to him how it happened. He's, well, I couldn't just cave in like that. It's supposed to be washing out for years and just taking the dirt down the sewer. It's just a big void down there.
Yes. Same thing as like the old plate, open jointed field tiles. Once they get a little suck hole, you'll, farmers, there'll be a big cold, there'll be a big hole in the, in the field. They'll have to go in and fix it. Like I said, when a joint fails, it just gradually pulls more, or, you know, material.
It's what it was washing out, you know. I think it fell out of the main. So the water would still go in it, but it's.
One more question, Todd. I know we had got a report back here on the, on our bridges now that are new ones that were posted. Is there any just moving?
So talk to Mike about that. I don't, how technically wanna get. So there's multiple ways you can rate a bridge. Most current one is the load factor rating method, or excuse me, the, the load resistance factor method. When I designed a new bridge, that's what I'm gonna rate it with, right? Does anything that's newly designed to use that. But older bridges, you have options. Like if it's a wood bridge, you can use a wild stress, which is, that's back from the seventies. There's a load factor method. And depending on which method you use, the ratings are different. So one of the bridges I looked at was, I think it was the F C twelve sixty-five, the one we looked at last week. It's rated for a type four truck, which is like a straight truck, narrow axle. I think, I forget what the tonnage on it, but that's what set the twenty-one ton rating. Well, if you look at it with load factor, it still needs to be posted, but it's much closer to legal weight. So in an instance like that, on a fairly narrow bridge, what I would do, what I would propose to do is you put up signs at either end of the bridge saying, you know, one truck on the bridge at a time. So on a gravel road with a narrow bridge, in all likelihood, if I'm, if I'm driving a truck, I'm gonna wait or speed up. So I don't need another truck on the bridge. You're just not gonna do that. Now, on a paved road, totally different situation. You gotta have that posted for two lane loading. On a gravel road, I would say with a narrow bridge like that, or barrel bridge, you could put up signs at either one and keep it. Because, you know, when you rate a bridge, you have to rate it for two lanes loaded with a truck. All right. That's how you gotta rate it. So that's what I'm saying. So you can post it saying only one truck on the bridge. Well, now you've effectively taken the wide load and cut it back. So you could keep it legal for one truck on the bridge. So stuff like that, I think you could, on this situation, you could probably keep proposing sub bridges as long as you sign it for one truck on the bridge at a time.
Interesting. Question I have, and you've heard me talk about it at RPA, is Sam Shea was going to put some special signs out at the Hurstville intersection. And then he also said that what they were considering, rather than do the signage, is closing off, closing off the exit onto the highway at the Hurstville line hills. I think that would be a huge mistake for people that live on the S Gate Road. But we haven't heard anything back from him about they were gonna put some lighted signs so that people would better see that there's an intersection there. Could you just check with them and see where they're at with those signs? Cause I mean, it was, I'd say maybe even almost a year ago. Shortly after that accident, when the two men were killed, we talked to him about it. And we've talked to him since and several times.
So there would just be like a destination sign that says.
I think one of them was a walking light where the flash is back and forth if there's traffic.
So what kind of signs specifically would be?
All I know is he said they would be lighted signs.
To identify the intersection like this?
Yes, I think so.
And then he said, one of them was that if somebody pulls up to the intersection, this would start flashing on the highway.
They were gonna discuss that and get back to a.
You mean in the median?
Yeah.
Cause you're talking about like, if you were, if I, if I say I'm headed southbound and I get in the median and I'm waiting for northbound traffic to clear before I turn left and go east, you're talking about signs in the median there?
I don't know what he was talking about. All I know is he said there was some signage that they could put up, which would make it, make it more, make people more aware that there's an intersection there. And then we also discussed about the overhead lighting. It is lit, but it's not very bright.
And another one was when you're coming from the door, making a left-hand turn. As you, as you turn to go towards the kiln, the road is, you can't see the road.
And that was another thing that, that wanted to.
Lane lights in there or something. So when you make that turn, if you come over, if you're too far over and you look down here and you come across all of a sudden the roads, I mean.
Yeah. If you come straight across from the S Gate Road to the Hurstville Road, when you get across the Hurstville side, you're not on the road. You have to swing over to get on the road.
Yeah. It's just a distraction.
The, the two intersections, streets are offset?
Yes.
Problem is it drops off there. So you can't see it after coming south, but take a left, you can't see where the road is.
So when they four light sixty-one, they should've addressed that.
They should've. Yeah.
Okay. You might be able to do a traffic safety foot application to align the intersections is what you. The problem is you have to work with the state on that. So it's gonna affect their.
You know, I don't even know if it's set or out of alignment. It's just that that center part is so wide. Don't get it, you know, unless you're coming from the S Gate Road, you, I mean, it's kind of a straight shot across. But when you're turning, you don't hit in that traffic lane. You don't know where the traffic lane gets out.
Probably they'll say.
I think it drops off quick enough. You really can't see the road.
No, you can't.
Is there destination lighting on the east side?
I know the Starlight Society has lighting that they had for the kilns and that's on at night. I think there's some on the, on, on the east side. That's DOT, but I'm not sure.
Look at the map. I just was looking at it. I don't know if that was on. I'll email, say, let's see what, what's got stored.
Other than, other than closing the intersection. Cause otherwise they'd have to go through, pass the interpretive center, turn and come up and it would be, I don't think.
That intersection isn't much better than the other.
No, it's not.
There's been quite a few accidents on that.
But there's no acceleration lines on either one.
No, there's not.
There, there should. That might be an option.
Well, they talked about that several times. Yeah, we talked about that on fifty-two north by the, by the campground now, you know.
So like, if you go, if you're going west out of, you're pulling highway, on highway thirty. There's two paved roads. Not let, you basically come off the off-ramp, like you're heading towards Cedar Rapids. And then you start coming into where they put in a right turn lane, a center through lane, then a left turn lane. Years ago, we applied for a C step, which is a county state transportation grant. Basically, it's a joint project with the state to handle situations like that where before it was just one lane. So you got all the, there's, there are quarries there. There's, you know, hundreds of trucks every day trying to go onto that intersection. So it was, you had that. There's a big residential area on the south side, all kinds of turning movements, issues with, you know, traffic being whacked, backed up in the queue. So that was one reason that that intersection got redone. So that might be a, a situation where we need to have a conversation with them about doing some intersection improvements where they put in, you know, acceleration lanes or, you know, some turn lanes where you can park some traffic, you know, instead of clogging up a lane. So but again, that's, we applied for the C step grant, you know, ten years ago. Got denied. And that was a fifty-five, forty-five split for funding. And then like three years later, the state did themselves exactly what we were proposing.
They thought, they must've known you knew what you're talking about.
I don't know about that. But maybe they already had words, but I was just surprised because we had paid, which is nice.
Thank you, sir. Considering your arrival time, Brent, were you here for the visitor section? Are you here for?
No, I was, uh, cause Lauren, do you have time to do that attorney phone call maybe after? Okay. You guys have an idea when that'll be, uh, thirty?
Well, according to this, our last item is at ten forty, but then we're, we're running about five minutes, eight minutes late for, for Beth. So.
I think he's busy till eleven anyways, uh, scheduled till eleven. So.
That would be fine. Okay. Okay, that's, this time we're joined by Beth Gillock, Jackson County Treasurer.
Good morning. I'll have your packet, right? And you got the update. All right. And I believe my papers are in the same order as yours. You have the year-end cash checks and investments on hand.
Yes.
First page.
Yep.
So starting there, that is cash on hand in office, the last day of the fiscal year and the breakdown of it. The second page is the debits and credit card transactions that we took in on the last day that we're still pending and we hadn't received funds for yet. And then moving on to the web payments that we collected, but again, haven't received credit for in our deposit for in our account yet. And those are all total there at the bottom. It's pending. The next page is the bank account totals that we have, protecting and investment. And our C D breakdown is certificate of deposits breakdown is the next page. And the banking and investments balance sheet is a reporting print every day. That just shows again, the breakdown of each bank account and investment account. This one includes the CDs on it. That's what's different from the previous page. And I balance with that every single day. And then the next page then is the daily balance sheet that I use to break down all the, the daily activity. So the numbers that we'll use on this spreadsheet or like three quarters of the way down, you'll see cash in office, seventy-six thousand, three fifty-five, twenty-one, cash in banks, twenty-two million, five twenty-five, four seventy-one, forty-seven. And then the total cash amount, which is those two numbers added together, is the twenty-two million, six hundred, one thousand, eight hundred, twenty-six dollars and sixty cents. And that is the number that I balance to with the auditor's office. So that is coming up here in the next few pages. But just wanted to point that out that you'll see the, the middle number there is, is what matches the previous number on the banking and investments balance sheet to show that those match. And the next, the next few sheets, actually I did the detailed report for your semi-annual report. This is the report that gets printed in the newspaper. The first page gets printed. So you'll see January's balances in the first column, revenues, and then total to be accounted for would be those two numbers added together. Then we take out the disbursements and end with the fund balance for June. And that's where you're gonna see that twenty-two million, six oh one eight, twenty-six, sixty-eight. Any auditor's warrants outstanding are in the next column. So then you'll see again, that number is what we're balancing to there. But it's all broken down on the next few pages. You'll see all revenues broken down. Uh, you'll see all revenues broken down. And then all expenses broken down. Um, that part doesn't get printed in the newspaper, but I just put it in there for your reference.
That's great.
The next one is a spreadsheet that I put together to show that we balance with the auditors. So I use the, their fund status report that Sally provides to me. The auditor's ledger is the first column. And then we've got any warrants outstanding. Well, you'll see that four hundred fifty-one thousand, one forty-three ninety was showing on the semi-annual report too. And then my balance is at the bottom, the twenty-two million, six oh one, eight twenty-six, sixty-eight. And that's what we wanna see. And the continuing on with that semi-annual settlement, the top half of that page, uh, breaks down the currency and the cash in office. So I balance with the, uh, going back to those three numbers on that spreadsheet, you'll see the seventy-six thousand, three fifty-five, twenty-one is the total cash in office and that's the breakdown of where it's at. And then the twenty-two million, five twenty-five, four seventy-one, forty-seven is the cash in banks. And to add up and get to that twenty-two million, six one eight, two six, sixty-eight, that's how we get there. So physically where it's at. And then the bottom half of that sheet is, uh, interest and transit is added in. So the interest that we had earned but hadn't been, well accrued but hadn't been earned yet is listed there. And you'll see again that twenty-two million, five twenty-five, four seventy-one, forty-seven that we balance with for the cash in banks. And the next page is the signature page. So we'll just kind of skip over that for now. The last page is the cash balance sheet. And again, it's just a spreadsheet that I put together to show that, um, our banking side and our accounting side match. And that banking is at the top where it adds in the interest that, that has accrued, um, for the month of June. And we get to that twenty-two million, five twenty-five, four seventy-one, forty-seven there in the middle. And then adding in the stuff, um, for cash in office and checks in office and and return checks and whatnot, um, we get to the twenty-two million, six oh one eight, twenty-six, sixty-eight there at the bottom. Just another way to show that it's all balanced.
A lot of numbers.
A lot of numbers, yes, but they all match and that's what.
That's the main, yeah.
Do you guys start with Lynn once in a while or?
We're good, we're good. So if you want to do your approval and see if there's any questions, um, I'll get your signatures on here before I leave. So I have y'all in one spot. It's easier that way.
Do we have any questions? Do we have a motion to approve and authorize signatures by the board?
And make that motion second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Oh, great.
You could print it just a little smaller.
You couldn't read it?
Yeah, I got to move the glass.
And, um, I think you would submit, you submit this to the newspaper then?
I actually think you should.
Well, I, you know what, we'll, we'll talk about it. Yeah, I'll email the right copy to you. I think I asked.
The one in Word, traditionally they're one in Word and I can send it when I send my message.
When? Sounds good.
Oops, I flipped it over there.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Backing and tell her we're.
I did.
Okay.
Yeah, I told her Ben is finishing up, so. All right, thank you.
Good day.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Does that say Barb?
Yes.
Barb, were you wishing to address the board?
She's waiting for her appointment under my portion.
What's under your portion? Whenever you're ready, you can let her.
I just called Sarah. She's in.
This time we're being, um, joined by Deputy Kate, our human resource administrator. Good morning.
Good morning. Everybody?
We're here.
So Sarah is on her way down, but, um, we have concluded the application and interview process to fill the assistant county attorney vacancy that has become in her office. She's prepared to make an offer to a candidate. However, during the time period it takes for her to transition her license to Iowa, she cannot practice law in Iowa. So Sarah and I talked a little bit about that and came up with a solution, which as soon as Sarah comes here, she can explain that in a little one T L.
How long is it typically take to do that?
It should be September first. I think it's been ninety days ago. So they had already applied when they moved here for their, for the transfer of the license. It's just a lot of tape and they have to go through a lot of background checks.
Well, they have moved here already.
That, yeah, correct. Yep. They were just licensed to practice in a different state.
There are reciprocity in this process?
Not for attorneys. You have to be licensed in Iowa to practice law in Iowa.
Now we're being joined by Sarah Danforth, Jackson County Attorney.
Good morning.
Good morning. So I told him that much about the request that we're making and told him to explain that.
Okay. Um, so I have a very good candidate who has eleven years of prosecuting experience in Minnesota. Um, I think her skills will transfer very well. Um, we're just waiting on her to get her Iowa license. So that means she can't practice law until she does. But I talked to the Office of Professional Responsibility and they said that as long as she only does things I would hire a law clerk or a paralegal to do, I could bring her in early. Um, and then she could start getting to know processes, procedures. She could also help me out by doing some of this stuff like discovery work, um, that I don't have time to do because I'm covering all the cases. Um, so what I'm asking is that I be allowed to hire a temporary law clerk at thirty-six, thirty-two an hour until she gets her license. And then once she gets her license, I will officially hire her as the assistant county attorney.
Okay, so you, you have made her an offer and she accepted it pending her license? Is that what I'm hearing?
First, we need the approval to establish the temporary position at the rate of pay because the board does set that. She will then reach out to the candidate. Um, she's had discussions with her about what the interim is going to look like until that degree is transferred.
So we don't know that she will take the position though, yeah?
Oh, yes. I don't think she would put in work, work as a law clerk if she didn't want the, uh, ultimate position. Yeah.
That's where I was going.
Oh, gotcha. Yeah, yes, yes. She's, yeah. From my conversations with her last week, she is on board. I'm very excited.
Just for clarification, is it thirty-six, what?
Thirty-six dollars, thirty-two.
And that's my type of one. I put thirty-six twelve, so I apologize for that.
I just wanted to make sure that.
Twelve last one.
Thirty-six, thirty-two, yeah. So if all is well with that, we would ask for a motion to approve the temporary law.
And you can bring her in almost immediately. Is that what you're saying?
Next week, yeah.
Yeah.
I would make that motion.
A second. A motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Thank you very much. I will announce to me next week after we've gotten everything.
Next for me, the assistant county engineer position. So with the upcoming vacancy that will be coming fall of twenty-three with the assistant to the county engineer retiring, um, we had had discussions in on establishing two assistant county engineer positions to replace that one vacancy. If that is the wishes of the board, I would ask for a motion to establish two assistant county engineer positions within the engineer's office.
Make that motion.
I would second.
With motion and a second to establish two assistant county engineers. Um, any discussion?
So does this, if, if we establish that we're going to do that, it's not to say that we are going to hire two.
Correct.
Okay, so.
Gives us the potential to hire two.
Right, that's, yeah. All I needed them.
Okay, any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
So then since we have wrapped up the interview process for the assistant positions, um, and with the second position now available, I would ask for a motion to authorize myself to present what she offers with both candidates and me.
Aloud.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Have you checked the references?
I did, yes.
Okay.
One hundred percent, one hundred and ten percent positive feedback all across the board.
And the driver's license?
Yep.
Okay.
The background check came back yesterday, so I made contact yesterday afternoon. Yeah, so as long as, um, I will reach out to the candidates and present an offer, um, see whether they wanna be that salary wise and um, hopefully be back in next Tuesday.
Yeah, hopefully.
A special meeting.
Yeah, okay, or we could be. But I will keep you apprised as those discussions ensue with the candidates.
Okay.
And we'll get from there. But yeah, the background checks.
Candidates that are applied, so I hope, I hope it works out, yeah.
Yep.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Yep. Okay, cleaning personnel. So Lisa and I conducted interviews a couple of weeks ago with each of the candidates that were interested in filling the cleaning personnel vacancy. I would, we had advertised the position to be set between fourteen and fifteen fifty. I would ask that we set the starting rate of pay for the position at fifteen dollars an hour with a potential fifty cent increase at six months pending a successful evaluation. I surveyed all departments. I had them fill out a spreadsheet with what they wanted done and how often they wanted it and during the time of the day and all those kind of things. Every department wants ninety percent of their cleaning done before or after hours. The prior Mike that retired, he worked five thirty to nine thirty in the morning, twenty hours a week. So I would recommend we keep it at that. All of the candidates we interviewed are flexible in the hours that they worked. So in the event that we do need to have them change up their hours on every given, any given day outside of the five thirty to nine thirty, they're willing to do that. So I would set the hours at five thirty to nine thirty with just some flexibility based on the day-to-day needs. Um, and I will also, I will assume the supervisory responsibility for the position as long as that is the wishes of the board. I would be the day-to-day contact for them as well as the departments to reach out for all of their cleaning needs. So if anybody recognizes anything within the building that needs specific attention, they can reach out to me and I will make sure to do that. Um, I've established some checklists for the positions per department based on the information they gave me for feedback. So that'll be a starting point for them to check it off for every department as they go, um. So I think it'll be a workable solution. Um, I will get with me and still let them know if this is the direction that we go after today and let them know that. Um, this and I kind of talked about a little bit and feel like it's probably the best direction to that one position.
Sounds perfect.
Basically, you're just establishing a work type scenario of when and how and what.
And.
So you don't have any applicants?
Yes.
Yes.
You do, okay.
Yeah.
That's, it says possible hiring.
So are you prepared to make an offer there too pending, okay?
Yes. Yeah, we, we kind of talked about tentative rate of pay for that. So before I made any official offer, I wanted to make sure that we were on board with.
So do you need separate motions here for the pay scale first?
I would ask for a motion to set the starting pay for the cleaning position at fifteen dollars per hour with the fifteen cent increase at six months pending successful evaluation.
A second.
The motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
So then I will reach out to candidate A to present the offer and I'll come back in next week as long as they accept and give you a roll higher.
So do you need a motion to move forward with that or that? No, okay.
Starting date?
Um, I'll let you know that. Hopefully Monday. I will make a phone call right now and see if they were fairly flexible.
So you can go ahead and hire before we.
So you did say, I thought, that most departments wanted cleaning done after or before hours.
Right.
But then you also said this person is gonna be working from five thirty nine.
Well, the, the alternative was to have them come at four thirty.
Yeah.
So from five thirty to eight thirty, they are here before the offices are opened.
But they understand they could be flexible, have other duties or extra duties at any given time. Cause you got.
Yeah.
We asked that during the interview.
Relaxing during a thunderstorm, we might have some extra money.
Well, there might, you know, there is some out of, out of office cleaning that needs to be done too. So they could do that at
Right.
eight thirty.
Yeah.
So most of the offices only wanted like their specific desk areas cleaned while they're here. So like if they rotate throughout the offices from eight thirty to nine thirty when they're here and can get your desk cleaned or my desk cleaned, those kind of things.
But you'll be in charge of their duties or his or her duties and not maintenance?
Right.
Yeah.
And she works for who oversees her, her, the person who clean?
I will.
Okay. Not worried.
Correct.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah. 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 I mean, I think it's, I think for the departments to have a daily contact here under my office every day.
Yeah.
You know, they still want something that needs attention.
You know, what has to be done. You can see what has to be done. And if you've got a complaint from someone, well, let's take care of it.
Yeah, so as far as actual cleaning, I think we can stand up.
We're, we're not in a position that this person is gonna be cutting shrubs and trimming grass.
You know, we are very specific in the interview that in the absence of another maintenance personnel, we have a snowstorm and they need to throw some salt. You know, and those kind of things, but by default, they will not be. You know, we're maintenance custodian, we're maintenance custodian that will be on the outside perimeter and this will be not.
We're very clear about that in the interview.
Yeah. So I will go ahead and make the offer and I'll come back in next week with hopefully a candidate to present.
Sounds good.
Okay?
Thanks for your.
What's that?
I hope you have several candidates to present.
Me too. Me too. Thank you.
Okay.
So this morning I need a motion to approve the minutes of the July twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two open and close session board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
Motion to approve.
That would second.
Motion in a second to publish the previous meeting minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
I also need a motion to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of claims listing in the amount of three hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifteen cents.
I would make a motion to approve with the note that, uh, the engineer's office was substantial, a little over two hundred thousand, but as Todd stated when he was in here, we have a lot of construction and maintenance going on.
Absolutely. That's what we need. That's, that's what the money's for. Yeah, I'm a second. A motion in a second to approve the claim in the amount of three hundred and sixty-six thousand, one twenty-seven point one five. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Need a motion to accept place on file and authorized to chair signature on the county recorded reported fees collected for the month of July twenty-twenty-two in the amount of fifty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion in a second. All those in favor?
Right.
Aye, motion carried.
Need a motion to approve the renewal of a Class C native wine permit with outdoor service and Sunday sales to the Tabor Winery at thirty-five seventy, sixty-seventh Street Baldwin, effective August seventh, twenty-twenty-two through August sixth, twenty-twenty-three.
A motion in a second to approve the Class C liquor or, uh, wine permit for Tabor Family Wine.
Aye, 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 motion carried.
Um, I had a couple. I, you know, where can I find my, uh?
Agenda?
Yeah. Thank you for my agenda. Um, actually, what, yes, thank you. What I really wanted to do was just update the board today um, concerning the opioid settlement. Sarah and I had attended a Zoom meeting with all of the parties involved in this settlement and Jackson County was awarded fourteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and sixteen cents. I did apply for that last week and I would think that that money should be here by the fifteenth of August. It is up to the board to make those decisions as far as how is that money is spent. And there is a, um, it's very clearly called out how you can spend the money. And I have a copy of that here if you would like to see that as far as who can apply and what that can be spent on. So I have a paper copy, but I would be more than happy to also email you a copy so you understand what is going to be asked from people that are wanting some of this money. The other thing that, um, because they have to apply to you, excuse me, Sarah will be, um, coming up with a form, an application form. So departments that want to apply for this money, they can fill out the application and submit it to you and she is working on that.
We have, um, Luann make copies of that for us.
Yes. Absolutely.
I'd rather have a paper copy than it on my iPad.
So yes, that's no problem. So that was the other thing I wanted to update you on. The last thing that you needed to know about, of course, is ARCA, um, the American Rescue Plan. You know, Jackson County was awarded three point seven seven million. A year ago, we applied for half of that. Last week I applied for the second portion of. Last week, I applied for the second portion of that to come, which is one point eight eight seven, eight nine nine million. I did alert the treasurer's office to look out for this money because it will be coming into the funds. But again, um which, that's our, what they call the second tranche. It um I've, I've applied for and we've got parameters as far as how we're going to use it and I think there's probably some further discussion when it comes to that. But so we've got some money coming back into our Jackson County conference.
Well, and I, and I think that from the list that you sent us that we've kind of overspent what what we're getting. I think we need to look at that list and reevaluate and see what we want to do.
And see, you know what? That's why I put between spent and what was estimated. So maybe we need to estimate down on a few things. Maybe I'm high on a few things. Maybe you don't want to do a project. But at least I thought when, when Todd came in and he talked to me about that, it kind of was you know, it was good to go back and revisit it, take a look at it. I did make some adjustments. Um but again, they're just estimates and I don't know, you know, some of these projects, if that much money is needed or unfortunately, maybe we need more money on some of these projects. But it's a starting point.
With the bid for that levee wall down there.
Four hundred.
Well, we, we estimated four hundred. You know, I think, yeah, so that's why.
It's three hundred and something, but I think it's really close.
Yeah, so that's just an update of where we're at with those different projects and.
The problem with that is, I guess, with that project specifically is if you're gonna put the ramp, boat ramp, include that like Nathan was talking last week, that's a whole nother
Absolutely.
Basket of eggs there and, and if they could get some grant money for that, that's, you know.
Yeah.
He was checking on that, see if he could use that four hundred towards a match for a grant to do the ramp.
You have to be careful with that. Is that a federal grant or a state grant?
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, that, that would be my only caution.
Yeah, he's checking that. I mean, to make sure that it would work.
Yeah. And then that's all that I have for the board today.
Okay, Luanne, we have a little time before our public hearing at, at ten o'clock, so do you want to come and take care of your business?
Good morning.
Morning.
All right, let's start with the calendar. Um this afternoon at three o'clock, Larry, I tentatively have a green space redevelopment meeting for you. I haven't heard anything concrete about that, so. Um Wednesday, August third at nine AM is an RTA meeting um in Dubuque or by Zoom for all of you. Thursday, August fourth at eleven AM is a tag meeting by Zoom from Mike. And at four PM, it's um a Jackson County Economic Alliance Goal Setting Meeting for Jack. Friday, August fifth, the courthouse will be closing early at three PM. And we're having a mandatory safety training for all the courthouse employees that afternoon. Monday, August eighth at seven thirty AM is an early childhood Iowa Executive Board meeting into wit or by Zoom for Jack. Our next regular meeting is Tuesday, August ninth, um at nine AM. Um that day we will be, there's a, in your packet, there's um a request for proposals for tree cutting out at the Catfish Hollow Cemetery. That should be coming out of the paper this next week as well. And we'll be opening those bids.
I don't know, some Catfish Hollow, but where is the cemetery? Can you see it from the road here?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's on the north side of the road. You'll see it. If you drive down far enough, you'll see it. Yeah, it's, it's a little thing, but yeah, it's, it's closer to the road.
It is visible.
Yeah.
Under the trees.
Are gonna be cut down. There goes your shade.
Okay, um my visitor, my business this morning, um I'm looking for approval of an appointment to appoint Barb Cass. I believe she's with us on the.
Hello.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's a recommendation for an appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission to fill a vacancy and her term would expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Well, looking over her resume and her application, I think she's extremely qualified to be a part of that commission. Any comments from you, Barb?
Um, not, not really. Um, I'm not sure what is needed from me in this meeting, but I'm happy to uh be a part of the preservation. Um it's not something that I professionally have been engaged with, but I would share a passion for uh saving saving old things.
Well, we appreciate you applying.
Yeah, it sounds like a good fit.
Awesome.
And make that motion to appoint.
I would second. We have a motion in a second to appoint a bar to the uh Jackson County Historic Preservation Commission. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye, welcome aboard.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you personally. Thank you for willing to serve and to be a part of it.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Well, folks, I will drop off the line now. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Okay, go ahead.
No, I was just going.
Well, the other piece of business I have in mind is talking about the HUD lead-based paint grant. I think you want to make a decision on that today.
Well, I did discuss with, with Matt and I talked with Kelly um and gave them our questions and Matt responded back and I didn't, I just wanted to know what the board whether we want to take uh our table motion off, off the table and discuss it, decide whether what we're gonna do or if we're gonna do anything.
Well, I said we were certainly discussing, so I'd make a motion to take the table issue off the table and put it back on for discussion.
I'm second. Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Well, did we with the answers that we got from, from Matt, um are those answers adequate to make a decision?
Well, I see, I certainly believe it's a worthwhile program. Um you know, I had questioned who does the inspections and who inspection and, and who's qualified to do that and I, I'd like to know who the applicants are, of course, you know, going forward to see. I'm not rehabilitate a, a whole apartment building for someone. I mean, the, the income levels are based on the owner? I guess that's the question I didn't get answered yet. The owner or the tenant?
Good question.
Well, if, if the owner applies for it, I mean, they, they make the two thousand dollar match.
Right.
Yeah, but.
But the applicant, um I would think they would have to be within the guidelines of the, the rental program.
Income.
Income, yep.
Well, certainly, I mean, something that we probably need to sustain if, you know, for the health and being of our children and, and whatnot, you know, and get these, get these older buildings in compliance, um. It's, it's not a lot of asking, I guess, per year or so.
And as it indicated, if it is a, a rental property and the owner pays the two thousand, we don't have to. So I hope there's a lot of rental property. So what do we want to do?
I, I would make the motion to go ahead and approve the agreement and to move forward with application or
do we have to have grant application?
Matt sent a letter of commitment.
So just a commitment from our board to their.
We have a motion and a second to approve uh a contract with um TCIA to do a HUD lead paint grant for Jackson County. All those in favor?
Aye.
One more question. Is this a yearly thing or is this a contract for several years?
It's, it's a several year, four, four years.
I would second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
That's all I had for you.
Okay. And with that being said, it is ten o'clock. And at this time, we'll open the public hearing for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget amendment.
Sarah is gone today, so.
But we'll have to wait then.
Oh, I thought I could do this. But if you have any questions, you'll have to call her. I didn't, uh, yes, we can do that. Yeah, no, I think. Right. Yeah. Okay. And I know that we are new into the fiscal year, but um this is resolution nine eighteen dash zero eight dash zero two dash twenty twenty-two. This is an amendment to our current uh twenty-two fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Some of the changes that we're asking for is the, in the nurses fund for COVID nineteen funds of eight thousand, seven hundred dollars. Um the county environmental for the Asane asylum building preservation, that is for them to apply for that two thousand dollar grant. There was a discussion should they do it prior to July first or after, when we felt that it was in the everybody's best interest that they applied for this after July first and I think it was Laura that talked to the board a couple of weeks ago, so that's what that two thousand dollars is for. Also with the departure of the GIS administrator and with what you as a board have done as far as um getting this position uh Phil, there was no money in the GIS budget for salaries, so this is being amended by twelve thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And of course, we've always got the jail construction in the capital projects fund of one point three million dollars, and that's just giving us the ability to pay some of those bills. So with that, I would entertain a motion um today to move forward um with accepting this um adoption.
Motion to approve.
We'll close the public here.
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
Since there's nobody listening in, that would be a public comment.
Motion to approve or close the public here.
Second, the motion and the second to close the public here. Hearing on the amendment to the Jackson County budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
With the closing of the public hearing, then I would ask to approve resolution number nine eighteen dash zero eight dash zero two dash twenty twenty-two for the amendment to the county budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three as recorded in resolution book five eight seventy-four.
Motion to approve.
Second, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
I would also need a motion to approve and authorize the chair's signature um signing the record of hearing and determination on the amendment to the county budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Don't move. A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
And that is all I have for the board today.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. This time we'll recess till Elizabeth gets here.
Have Andy.
This time we'll reconvene the meeting of the Jackson County Board of Supervisors and next up is Lois with Townsend, our Jackson County Health Administrator. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Report.
Kind of.
Thank you.
If you have one, please. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You maybe have one for Mary?
I have an extra one. I do not.
Okay, that's fine.
I, I can give you mine some for them.
But I probably write all over this one.
I mean, I can give her mine and then.
Oh, that's fine. We're fine.
Okay. Okay. Um, so I haven't met with you guys for a while, so this is just, I don't have a huge report um other than our grants to counties um grant that we've been doing. I did a lot of water testing over the last few months. Um in fact, I think we did almost a hundred more than Clinton County did, which I keep trying these things. Um.
They're slacking off down there.
Yeah, well, I averaged.
Results? Mostly good?
Well, mostly good. Yeah, yeah. Um, but yeah, it was really good. I advertised the program for about a month straight and we got a huge response, which was really, really good.
Wonderful.
Um I think that it kind of woke up the um, you know, just people knowing about the grant um and knowing that it's ongoing and that they can test their wells annually, so it's been, it's been really good. Um and we got a lot of uh wells, abandoned wells um sealed, so that was good as well. Um and the grant year ended on June thirtieth and I did an application for our next grant year, so I'm already doing testing for it. Then we know it's something that, you know, it's just a grant that we continue to get either way. They want us to have it, so. Um, let's see, on June first, I did a um luncheon for the subject contractors so that they could learn more about the Eagle Flow cocoa filters. Um that's a system that I really like. Um I recommend it over our sand filters. I know that the previous administration did a lot of sand filters in the county. But I've been really kind of moved away from those and put conventional in if we can. Um and then Eagle Flow units, I like them um just because they're a little cleaner. I feel like they're easy to install. They've got a great warranty on them. Um I just think that the, they're a little bit better um than the sand filter, so.
Is there a huge cost difference?
There really isn't. There, actually, the cost is similar to the install for the sand filter.
Okay.
Um the problem with the sand filters is that there's not a lot of quality sand out there, and so if you don't, aren't using quality.
They can just get it off our gravel roads.
Yeah. No, um if there's not quality sand, then people will run into problems down the road with their, their sand filter system, and so the longevity of it isn't there where it's with this particular unit. I like it. Um so I really just wanted the contractors to learn more about it. Um and I did convince one of them to become a um, um inspector for them. Um otherwise, we were looking at having somebody from like way out in western Iowa come out and do the inspection, so it was important to me that if we were going to be recommending these systems to people that we had somebody local doing the inspections.
So installation inspections or?
So there's an annual maintenance with these. Um it's, it's got a ten-year warranty on it. Um or the media has a ten-year warranty, but it typically goes for fifteen years. But in order to have that warranty, they'd have to have it inspected annually, um so that's a contract that's with Eagle Flow. But the nice thing about the system is that once that ten years is up and you replace the media in it, the warranty starts all over again. And the unit itself is a lifetime warranty, so I just like it because we've got a lot of um properties that are small, they can't fit a sand filter, or you know, maybe their water table's too high or this or that. But they're really best for just like space issues, which like I said, we run into a lot of that and you just drop them in. They come in at either a pack unit that's with the tank and the media, or you can just get the, the media filter and then use a regular septic tank.
So what's the filter made of?
It's cocoa husk.
Oh.
So you're supposed to be able to drink the, the.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I would recommend this, you know, and it's supposed to be tested just to make.
Bring them a copy, a, a sample next week.
Did you have a good turnout for the, with the contractors or as far as?
You know, we had like six, six of them come. Unfortunately, it was just kind of a busy time, um so I probably will have another one maybe next year, um.
Or even a winter one, you know, and maybe you can't put septic in, but you can certainly learn about them. When you talk about media and I, and I see this as cause I was working in the system one time that I put a roof on their unit. This media, what they called was almost like a plastic honeycomb type thing.
Okay.
So I don't know.
This is not the same.
No.
Uh, it's, it's like cocoa, like the outside of a cocoa, like coconut. It's cocoa husk.
So can you take that out and remove it and change it, put cocoa husk in?
Yeah, so the cocoa husk, it gets, so it's good for up to fifteen years on average if the system is cared for properly. The warranty on it is for ten years, so even if you use it for the fifteen years, once you have it re- replaced, your warranty takes in for ten years again, so your warranty's on the, the media.
So we still have the septic tank. And then it goes to the filter system.
Yeah.
And then it goes.
And then it gets discharged out from there, so you can do a surface discharge or you can just have it go under the ground, however. Um, there is also a pack unit, so if we really have people with space issues, like in some of these subdivisions, you know, where the lots are just really small and we're running across issues with that, they have a pack unit where it's the tank and the media filter in one big unit. So they're really handy. So they're really handy. They're nice. And we've been putting a lot more of them in and people just have a misconception about those things. Oh, they only last for ten years. No, that they last a lifetime, but the media is warranty.
Well, people don't realize regular septic system, so we had that tank pumped every.
Right. Yeah, yeah. So that's why with this one, it's, you've got that maintenance contract. The only issue I ran across is that I did run across um, one system that had been installed when the previous administration was here. Um, and they had not received any kind of correspondence from Eagle Flow to have their system maintenance. So that was something that I worked on and I said, look, if we're gonna be installing these in the county, I want to make sure that there's maintenance contracts, that that is not something that was like a misstep that they don't have. Um, so that's something I did recently follow up on with Eagle Flow, so.
So we test the, do they periodically test the discharge? Is that what you told me or?
Yeah, they're supposed to check it annually. And that's part of their contract, so. And it's the same with sand filters. Um, it's just that we have so many, there's so many sand filters out there that I don't have like necessarily documented just because, who knows, missing records.
So sand filters, they don't actually put the sand in the tank, do they? That's just spread out.
Yeah, it's just spread out.
Okay. So that would be a major project to replace the same, the same.
Yeah, I mean, a sand filter, you're looking at sixteen to twenty thousand dollars to install one, depending on the size. And then, you know, if they fail, they failed, I mean, then you gotta look, replace everything, so.
We call fail, do we call, they, we say in backup?
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so that's one thing I worked on. And then I just have a list of all of the permits and um, wells and assessments we've done. Um, the big thing I have for you is a, there's a draft of letter here. Um, we've run into a situation down in Green Island where there's a few properties for sale um, or are in a pending sale status. Um, and basically, they don't have room for septic system. Yeah. Um, trust me, this is not something I've been like wanting to deal with, but it's something that just does have to be dealt with, so. Um, I did meet with my board a couple of weeks ago and we just kind of talked about, you know, what, what is the county's responsibility towards this? What is the health department's responsibility? Uh, what can we do? So I drafted a letter that is gonna go to everybody in that little area. Um, and basically what we're gonna be focusing on is water quality. Um, and then setback concernment for wells and onsite wastewater systems. So I'm offering to go out there. I mean, obviously, we have free water testing anyway, but um, I'm gonna be down in Green Island, just going door to door. Um, it's okay, I do this, this is fine. I'm fine, um, for three days and just going out and measuring everything and seeing what people's setbacks are, checking water quality. Um, I mean, hopefully, the goal is to get everybody's water tested down there. Um, and I tried to put it in a way that was, you know, sounded okay. So if you guys have any, this is a draft letter. I haven't sent it out yet. Um, if you want to take a look at it, you know, the next day or two, um, I'd like to have it sent out by Friday.
If you're comfortable with it, I'm, you know, I don't have an issue. Is this, is Larry, you think that's something that Iris would look into also in a community like that?
Yeah, we've talked about it.
Yeah.
I mean, to, what you're saying is with the cocoa system, some of that would be relevant here, I would think.
So, no, not really. Um, because some of the lots are so tiny, you couldn't even fit a, like a septic tank on it. So, you know, I know there's one individual that's trying to, he's had this house listed for quite some time, trying, the realtor is like, hey, what can we do? What can we do? And I'm just, it comes down to, do we say, you know, it's just not suitable for, you can't put a system on there? You're just gonna have to walk away from the property. I mean, that's what this is really about.
Well, we run into it before with previous administrators, you know, I mean, we've dealt with it for many years and I think sometimes the, the heads were turned probably, but yeah.
I mean, there's some FEMA money out there to buy out some of the stuff in the floodplain, and that would be a possibility. You buy it out and then the county could buy it or Iris could buy it and then we'll set up a big septic system and hook, you know, four, five, six houses up to whatever.
Yeah.
That's an option.
Yeah, I kind of talked with Larry about this previously, just because, just trying to get ideas. And so, you know, he kind of felt like, let's start with water quality, you know, are there issues down there because the setbacks are not really being met, you know, everything's so close together. Some of the houses are like practically on top of their wells, you know. Um, I know that there's uh, at least three systems that need to be replaced down there right now. Um, and the homes up along the back on the bluff there, I mean, one of them, we did an install with the cocoa filter last fall, but they had to get an easement to put on, put the system on their neighbor's slot. Um, some of these other places don't have the ability to do it, um, or they have to go out of the road. I mean, there's just all these different, it's a mess.
What, how big, uh, like the cocoa system, could you do one that would be big enough for, you know, two or three homes? Would that be an option?
Um, I don't believe so. Um, I, my thought was if anything, you know, if we did go the direction where we put in a system for our several homes, it would probably be a bigger, like a sand filter down in one of the floodplain areas. I do know that three lots just got sold and are, or are in like a pending status possibly. I think like maybe like a foreclosure or something like that. Um, two of them would actually be suitable. They're kind of like right in the middle of town. They might be suitable to put a system in, but I just don't know. I think, you know, the first thing is test the water. But the bigger issue that I was struggling with is what responsibility is our responsibility? If somebody owns a tiny little lot, they just don't have room for a system. Where do we, where does the county? Yeah.
You know, the small one, I think they have a holding tank is what they had been using.
Yeah, this one, this one property, there's definitely no room for a holding tank. There's nothing. And right now it's discharging out into the ditch. So. So I have to go down and really look at everything to kind of see where we're at. Um, I'm trying to put it.
Wear your hip boots.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm trying, you know, I obviously have concerns are about raising, you know. I don't want anybody to think, oh, the county's gonna come in.
Pay for this.
Yeah, pay for this or say you can't live here or any of that, you know. Um, so I'm trying to do it delicately, but it's a concern and it's something that just keeps coming back to my office and.
Have you shared any of your concerns with Sarah?
Um, I have not yet. Um.
Maybe something else.
Okay. Okay, I can definitely do that, yeah.
And I don't know, would Iris entertain even taking a look?
They may. I mean, we have, there's like.
There, there's definitely some low-lying area that you could, you know, I'm trying to think, is there a park area down next in the lower level?
There's empty lots, um, you know, and like there's some old mobile homes that I don't know if anybody's living in them. But you have to assume there are people living in them because some people live in some pretty, you know, rugged looking places. Um, or there may be like a camp cabin or something along those lines. But, you know, we've got another individual that is trying to purchase another property there and wants to turn it into an Airbnb. And, you know, he's like, well, can I just put a holding tank in? And I'm like, I don't know about that, you know, I just. So instead of approving things, at this point, I really need to get a better idea of how can we fix this as a whole? What, what really is the extent of the issue? Um, and kind of go from there, but.
You have not talked to Frank at all about that situation out there. I know he had gone through a couple of different times and I don't know if he had any ideas. I was thinking at one time, he had some type of an idea too for a lagoon or something down there, but I don't remember.
Yeah, I haven't talked to him. I mean, I could, just to kind of see, but I mean, really it comes down to either putting something in place for whatever how, houses might be in need or saying, hey, your house isn't worth anything. You're just gonna have to live with that. So, you know, but it's the one, there's one property where the homeowner says he put in, you know, eighty thousand dollars into fixing up this home, which I can't visually see that from the outside, but, um, you know, he purchased the property with some sort of a, you know, like he was able to keep the septic system as it was. Well, is it the county's fault that he put money into a house and planned on selling it, knowing that the system was gonna fail, you know, and not pass the time of transfer inspection? So that's where I kind of struggle a little bit.
Sure, no doubt.
Yeah, so, I don't know, that's, I, any ideas? I mean, this is what I've come up with, just in discussion with my board and with Larry, so. I don't know.
I, I, I still think that maybe you and Iris have a recommendation because they've been through this in Peterburg.
Done a lot of, lot of small towns.
Miles or Andover, they did, you know.
So I think like with Iris, I think where Larry was coming from, you know, he's like, start with the water quality. Is the water quality an issue? Cause that would be, come first with Iris, right?
We're having a few issues with some people in Bellevue yet, but say, well, my water's good. And I'm like, have you had it tested? And they have agreed. Those tests probably come back.
I did get one back. It was good. Yeah, yeah, we have some people down there that want to keep their wells. I mean, that's another issue. They want, there's another subdivision that wants to go in down there and they want their lots to be tiny. They want to make, you know, three acres into seven lots and it's just, you're putting in the same lot size that every other lot is down there already and it's, there's setback issues and there's water quality issues and I've been in conversation with the zoning department about that. It's like, the lot sizes should be increased and, no, they cannot have a well. They are gonna have to hook up to the city water. Um, but yeah, just lots of one issues, like, you know. But yeah, so that's what I'm working on right now. Um.
I think your letter would sign, I would say that it's to the point and I think you could send it out.
Okay, okay. And I'll run it by Sarah too, just to make sure. Okay. Yeah, this is just first step. You know, I've had a lot of push, people were like, hey, you know, one, one can, one can I do this or do that? And I'm just like, look, this could be a, a few-year process, possibly. You know, and so any houses on the market, I've said, maybe take it off the market until you know for sure what's, what's happening or list it, you know, so that people know that there's a possibility and they might not be able to.
They have to disclose that, correct? I mean, they have to disclose.
Yeah.
Private system that it passes inspection or going to have to with a time transfer.
Right. And you know, it's like I've said to the property owners, I'm like, it's not the health department's job to call your, the neighbors to find out if they're willing to sell property or have an easement. I said, that's up to the homeowner to do that. So, but it keeps getting dumped back onto us and I guess to the point where.
Yeah, if your lot's not big enough, buy some more property.
Yeah, yeah. So, anyway, I will, um, like I said, get this to Sarah, have her review it and then I'm planning on sending it out at the end of the week, so.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
We will be setting up a time with you and Laurie that come down and talk about office space. And, um, uh, I would hope maybe we could do that next week.
Okay.
As a work session afterwards, cause we've looked at some, um, alternatives and so, um, I think we need to make a decision.
Okay, that sounds good. I appreciate that. All right.
Thanks for all your efforts.
Yes, thank you. Nice seeing all of you. All right, have a good day.
Okay, next, boards and commissions. I don't think too many, too many met. Any reports from anybody? Okay. Being no other business to be in motion to adjourn. Second, motion in a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.